Hello and welcome to the Kosh. I'm your host Timber Smith. And I want to say thank you again for tuning in, Kosh listeners out there. Super happy to be here with you. We're here not as early as usual. It's a little later in the day. So I don't have the morning morning vibe going on, but it is a beautiful Sunday morning. And the weather is halfway decent. So for whatever reason, Wisconsin is deciding to actually treat us with some decency. Super happy about that. That's for sure. You know what? We're not, we're not going to waste too much time with small talk. We're going to jump in right away today, I think. Cause I'm, I'm pretty excited about who this guest is, or as you know, I like to say, I'm super excited about who this morning's guest is as always. And this morning's guest is Sarah Noe. Did I get that right?
You did. Good job.
Hey, well, you know, I tried to work on these phonetics before we jumped in. Sometimes it works and then in real time, then I just slaughter it all up. But today.
I'll give you a star.
I'll take the star. You know, I don't know about you. I didn't get a lot of stars when I was in school.
I got the foil stars.
You were that person? I was not about that life. They did not treat me as well.
I'm sorry to hear that.
I'm not that sorry. It worked out okay. So Sarah, can you please share a little something about yourself and what is your connection to the Kosh?
Well, I am a townie. So I was raised in Oshkosh. I was a little farm girl. Out in the country and I pretty much stayed here for my education throughout forever. I also graduated from UWO, excuse me.
Titan.
Yes. And I took that as an opportunity to also travel to Spain during college. And I stayed there for a year, but it was, yep, Spain, great. But what the great thing was, is I got allowed a lot of credits from high school, Spain, Spanish. And I was able to test out and get a major in, in Spanish from UWO with only a few classes. And then by, by living in Spain for a year. So it was great.
That's kind of smooth.
Yeah.
Say, that sounds like it saved a lot of tuition dollars.
Well, it did. I, it was almost like a free major. My major is really in, in business, but I was able to get Spanish. So that allows me to travel because around here, there's not a ton besides ordering food at a restaurant that you can use your Spanish. But it was, so anyone that does a foreign language, keep up with it because it really can give you a free, a free major, maybe.
I don't know. I think you could easily immerse yourself in communities. I do think we've got a significant Latino, Latina population around the region.
Yep. When I first started in, in college, there was, I think it was like a, you were supposed to help non-English speakers. Who spoke Spanish and we were going to tutor them. But for whatever reason, as soon as I started looking into the program, I think it just kind of faded away. So I'm not really sure whatever happened to that, but I love it. I love, I love being able to communicate with someone who might not. I might not have the opportunity to do so, or to help people randomly when they're talking in Spanish and I kind of know what they're saying. And if they see me shaking my head, they'll realize I'm, I know what they're talking about. So.
I think it's always nice if, you know, if, if they have a second language, but English isn't their first language to speak in their native is, is always. Cause the communication is different.
Yep.
So that's, that's pretty sweet. Yeah. Okay. That's cool. Family.
I have two children. One is a high schooler. She's a freshman. And the other is a sixth grader in middle school. So I actually just got back from vacation with the high schooler. We went early because she has soccer tryouts during spring break. So I took it as an opportunity for her and I to connect because typically we butt heads a lot back here, like a lot. I think we're a lot alike. But it was actually really, it was really pleasant. So I, I, I did, I, you know, I, it was like a week of us not fighting. So it was pretty good.
Hey, wait, that's, that's Lisa's keeping it real. And it is soccer season. You know, I had my own soccer player in the house. And now she's going to be one of the assistant coaches of Nina.
Ah, at the high school or okay. Yep. She, she played for U W O, right? For Erin?
Yeah.
I went to, I went to elementary school with Erin.
Shout out to Erin.
Yeah, she's great.
She is. She was fantastic. Nope. She came up through the system. So the Y rec, United, all the soccer.
Perfect.
Yeah, that's how that works. Is that, is that how your daughter is going?
Yeah, we'll see.
Maybe.
She, she loves soccer. She realizes it's not going, you know, soccer can't be your whole life. But she loves doing it and something she can kind of control and she's relatively good at it. I think. It gives her an opportunity to lead and be part of a team.
I, I find that team aspect to be super helpful and even more helpful as they go through the ranks and if they go into higher ed, that team is what sometimes can really help set the direction.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. First segment, what in the world is going on with? This is your opportunity. Start with the phrase, what in the world is going on with? And tell us what's on your mind.
Well, I will say, because I was away for a week or so, and I didn't really see this was coming. It sounds like they're getting, or they're going to try again to get rid of the moving forward, moving back for the time. And maybe we'll stay in this, this time change, this spring ahead function here. So I hope that they do it. I know that there's a, a bill in the senate right now, I think that that has to be passed by congress, but I, I hate jumping forward, jumping back, jumping all around because it's, I'd rather it be light out after, after your day.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure. I, I guess I, I haven't studied enough to, or I haven't put enough thought into it. I mean, right now I did. It's two days out of the year that throw a little hinkiness in there. And I'm always happy about the day where you get the extra hour. And I'm always a little bit less, I'm a little more apprehensive about the day where you lose the hour. Because it does take you about two days to make that up. Like this year I was like, oh, I kind of struggled on that.
Yeah. So the, the act of it itself isn't really what I love, but I, what I love is when we spring ahead, it gives everyone after school, after work, that extra hour of something to do.
Yes.
I don't mind going to work if it's dark, whatever. It's dark in the winter a lot anyway. But I think it gives an opportunity for kids to play outside, maybe a little bit longer. If you have children in sports, it gives us a little extra time after, after the end of the day. So I just like it. I like it like that. I don't like the actual act of springing ahead. That one, that's awful.
Facts. All right. My what in the world is going on with is what is going on with March Madness wives and girlfriends? And what I mean by that is this, look, y'all know who your husbands is. You already knew. You knew that there was going to skip work on Thursday and Friday and go watch. This is not new to you. They've been doing this. This is not new. So don't be mad. Don't be mad that he wasn't home Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Probably right now he ain't paying you no attention because it's Sunday and he's still watching games. This is March Madness.
Oh, it is. Have you ever done March Madness in Vegas?
Oh my God. I, I don't know if I could handle.
Oh, it's great. There's a lot of guys. So if any single ladies want to meet up with some guys, it's a great place.
Is that it?
It is. It's a great time. It's a little bit crazy, but yeah, the, they'll actually give you free drinks if you're female because they need females in the bars.
Cause it's all dudes.
Yeah, it's all dudes all the time. And you can, it's a lot of fun. It puts a little bit of money on the game. And one time I almost won like 1,200 bucks. But Duke got me in the end because they lost. So I hate Duke for that reason.
Oh, I'm not going to lie right now. I'm mad at a whole lot of teams because the brackets all busted up. You know, all you number ones, I think we should just take all the numbers off the teams. Just take them off. Cause you know what? It don't matter.
You know, who does do well during that time though, are the wives and the girlfriends because they pick the, the winners based upon outfits and color, color screen, color schemes of the uniforms. So they're typically the ones that are going to beat you because that's how they pick it.
I'm not going to lie. I do the same thing. Cause I don't even follow college basketball. So like, I just be like, well, you know what? I think they're, they sound like they cool. We're just going to go with them. So, no, I, I usually do it from. I pick my bracket off of ESPN clips. But the problem is I'm probably picking it from clips from five to 10 years ago. Cause they're just the names of the colleges I used to remember winning. So then I'm just like, oh, well, I think they used to have a good team, but I don't follow college basketball.
Well, nor, nor do I.
Nor, nor do you.
And that's probably, you should be able to do better than if you don't follow it. Because it doesn't make sense during March Madness.
Doesn't seem to. I don't know. Did you enter a bracket this year?
I randomly did because again, we were, we're gone. So I quick did it. We usually do it with work. And the other day I was, I was doing pretty well, but I don't know how, because I mean, I don't just, I think I had Baylor going and that was a number one and they tanked. So whatever.
I had him going far.
I had him going all the way. I'm pretty sure.
Oh man, yeah. They, they kind of, you know, I can tell you right now, and I'm going to put it out here to the public. My final two, I put out there is Gonzaga and Wisconsin. Which right as of today, and this, this show won't be published for a while, they're still in it. But Gonzaga almost threw it away.
Yeah, I saw that last night. I was like, wait, what? Why are you behind?
Facts. So, well, once again, March Madness wives and girlfriends, don't be mad at that man. Leave that man alone.
Yep. Just leave them. Kind of like football too. You knew you liked the sports. It's not like they hit it.
Mm hmm. Facts. All right. We're going to jump into the next segment. Word associations. First word, food.
Food. I would say real Mexican food and/or falafel. And the reason I say real Mexican is I can get that around here. Falafel, I have to travel at least to Appleton, get it otherwise like really far.
We've had this conversation on past episodes about like how we talk about going to the city next door, which is like 20 minutes. And we're talking about it like it's the next state.
Right?
Kind of drive to Appleton.
And some people don't. Like I, that's typically where I, if I want something good or interesting, that's where I go. I mean, there's places here, but.
No, they do. They, look, I've learned, at least I'm learning Appleton College Ave. And oh my God, there's some good, good stuff.
There is.
And I'm becoming a coffee house person.
I, I like, I always order the wrong thing though. So sometimes I'm a little apprehensive. I get nervous.
Is there too many options?
Yeah, there's too many options. And I feel like I, I just don't know what to order and I'm going to order the wrong thing and it's going to be awful. And it's still going to cost me six or seven bucks.
Oh, I'm going to put you on. If you're in Appleton and you're going, you go to the Copper Rock, they've got this yummy little shindiggy called the vanilla chai.
Oh, I love me some chai.
That stuff is, it's liquid Christmas.
Oh, nice. I like, I mean, there's some people don't, don't do a really great job at the chai. So that's interesting. I'll have to try it.
Yeah, no, you'd be, be very, very pleased with this. I, I found it, I got it kicked off to me from a coworker and I was, you know, in my job, I do a lot of meetings, up and down college Ave. And I was seeing one of my coworkers literally every day going to Copper Rock. And I was like, and she's actually one of our directors. She's our director of public works. And I was like, uh, you know, what's going on? Are you every day? Do you go there every day? And she was like, yeah, every day. And I was like, what you having every day? And then she put me on and I was like, I get it now.
Ah, see, you just, that's what she knows. Someone that knows what they're doing.
I was enlightened. That's what happened. Cocktail or beer?
Most definitely cocktail. And I would actually have to do two because I'm like a, I'm a high-end margarita kind of gal. But Gabe's has some great margaritas. But the problem is if you go to a townie bar, they are not making you a margarita. So you have to have something that they can have like behind the bar or whatever that they make. So it's a Jameson and lemonade.
Okay. Jameson and lemonade. And you are right. Some things you can't, you can't go to your everyday bar. I know bars where they, they frown upon. There's one particular bar and my wife asked for a lemon. They were like, this ain't the Roxy.
Yeah.
Well, it's a vet bar.
And, and I always ask, do you have lemonade? They're like, yes. I said, do you have Jameson? Yes. Okay. Then that's what I want. But you know, I'm always afraid that that's a little too, too much for them.
No, no, no. And that was, that was Mick and Sue. So shout out to Mick and Sue. Miss y'all. Okay. Jameson lemonade.
Yeah, it's good.
I haven't, I can't say, I can't drink dark liquor. So can't mess with it, but it sounds fantastic.
It's dark? Jameson's a little light brown.
Yeah, I know. Well, you know, you know how it goes. The, you, you have to know your body.
Yes.
And then sometimes it's just like, no, not for you.
See, I think the clear liquor for me would be the problem.
Oh.
Keep me away from vodka. I'll just go, I don't know. I'm drinking it.
Oh my God, this is sacrilegious. No, in our house, that's, that's vodka, vodka rules.
I like it, but I like it too much and I have no idea where I am. So.
Fair enough. Streaming.
So I don't stream like straight up. I mean, I'll binge watch it and everything, but I'm, I'm a true crime kind of gal. So whether it be podcasts or something on Netflix or whatever, if it's true crime, I'm there.
You're there.
I'm there.
Okay. What are you listening to with the podcast? Cause I'm curious. I want to, I'm looking for new podcasts. So true crime. And my daughter, I mean, my, my sister listens to like true crime podcasts. And so I'm, I'm thinking I need to, I need to tune in.
Well, God, I was just, one of them, like, of course I can't look at my phone right now. I'm trying to remember what it's called because they only have three seasons of it. And I think they're just, I'm going to have to pass. I can't remember what it's called. But what they do, which is interesting to me is they look up uncover or unsolved miss, not mysteries, unsolved crimes, murders. And they kind of start from the beginning to the end and their whole year of the podcast is different parts of that. And you kind of, it builds, you learn the characters. Or the people, of course. And in the end, they get closer to solving whatever that crime is. So unfortunately the name escapes me because again, they haven't had a new episode, but there's a lot of, if you do true, true crime podcasts, there's some great ones out there.
I'll tell you what we'll do, Sarah. You don't have to recall it now, but I will ask you to tell me later and we will put that podcast in the podcast notes.
Perfect.
So people can check it out. And okay. Anything else we're streaming?
Nope. As long as it's about
Crime.
Honestly, and it's, I realize not everyone, I can't, when I talk to people and they're like, what are you watching? And I'm telling them, they're like, oh no, no way. I'm not going to watch. I'm like, oh yeah. Totally fine. Don't put anything with animals because an animal always dies, but I guess I'm okay if something happens to the people.
To the people. Fair enough. All right. Shop local.
I would say shop local would probably be, you can't say Oshkosh without Hughes chocolate. So, and that's a shop local only when it's cold out. Because I believe they shut down for a few months in the summer because that melts the chocolate. So I would say the fact that growing up as a kid, you always knew about Hughes, but you never quite knew on Doty Street where that was. So it was always something that you drive down this Doty street until you saw the cars. And then you realized you had made it to chocolate heaven.
I find it, I find it interesting in Oshkosh, like they're just the two places, like it's the candy wars.
Yep.
Even though there's really no beef, but every local has an opinion.
Yes.
Like they've got a favorite and, and, and there's some reason for it. And I just find it like my wife is totally an Oaks girl.
I think Oaks has pretty stuff, but I don't necessarily love the flavor as much as I love Hughes. And I think Hughes is, isn't as refined looking, but I like the taste better. So.
That's fair. That is very fair. I think, I think there's a huge nostalgia thing there. Me, I don't know the difference. Just bring me, just bring me some turtles home.
All right. Well, you gotta go in the basement though. Like that's the, the key is going down into the basement and coming back up without falling or slipping. Especially a lot of people do it during Christmas time where it's icy out. And I always wonder like, and there's always people of elderly nature going down those stairs. I'm like, I want to know how many people have fallen down those stairs.
Bruh, hopefully none.
But how? You know, with as much safety as we have going on these days with everything, you can't do anything without being, having a warning.
Maybe they're just motivated.
I don't know. You want some chocolate. I can understand.
You know. Education.
Education. If you ask me this question two, three years ago, I probably wouldn't have much to say. But I've become with COVID really opened the eyes to a lot of parents and the families, grandparents. How important education is. And it can really, with the right education, you can help nearly every child become what they want to be. And I hope that our education system realizes that not all, not all the students should be going to four-year colleges, that we need people educated in what they love. And if your education is not providing you a spark or something that ties you to that, that school or that, that subject. You need to keep looking to find something that, that you love because I think a lot of people lose that. And some kids kind of fall through the cracks because it's just not for them, but there's got to be something for them. And the key is to find out what that is so that they stick with it.
I agree. Four-year education is not meant for everybody. I think there's been a time where it was oversold.
Yes.
And, and I'm, it's a, as someone who worked in higher ed, I do think higher ed can serve good purposes and, and definitely can open pathways and doors. And I'm about as pro higher ed as it gets in one sense, but in another sense, I also think there hasn't been enough emphasis on those other options.
Correct.
Because I do think like everybody's just not meant for the four-year experience. Like give me that hands-on. Now let me, let me go learn, learn hands-on or I'm a, I'm a huge, huge supporter of our tech schools. And I think Fox Valley Tech, shout out to Fox Valley Tech and all my friends. They do an amazing job and they got some amazing programs there. So like, I couldn't agree with, but I do think the culture is changing. I do think that more and more people, they're being a lot more, they're taking their time. They're being a little more picky. I think the cost of it all gives people pause.
And it should, but now there's so many ways that you can get that education and it doesn't have to be an in-person for your degree. So at least that opens it up a little bit more so that you can, maybe there's a, I don't want to say a subject, but what you're interested in, maybe not be offered in Oshkosh. But you're able to go to, through online education and find that thing that you love. I mean, you're not going to learn about marine biology so much in Lake Winnebago, but if you connect with the right college or a different type of tech, I think that there's opportunities for everyone. And I think a lot of people just don't realize, or especially students don't realize that there's so many options and our community needs people educated. And when I say educated, I don't mean formally, but even through apprenticeships and just mentors.
Absolutely.
Or start your own business. What do you like to do? Let's figure it out.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't, yeah. I think the whole start your own business. I think we need more people teaching people how to do that.
Yes.
Cause it's bureaucracy.
Yep. There's a lot of stuff.
There's a lot of stuff to that. And, and to make sure that you understand that too, because I think what a lot of people don't understand sometimes is when you, when you're starting that small business, that's life.
Yes.
Like it, you, and if it's small enough, it's your whole life.
Yep. And if you thought March Madness was bad, like you're not going to be seeing your family so much. So.
And so I mean, there's a balance. I mean, that's another thing on the opposite end of the spectrum that I feel like, you know, we, as America, we have sold the, the whole dream of being business owners, pretty, pretty hardcore. But you know, it doesn't come without its challenges and a level of commitment you've got to be ready for.
Yep. I think that's why finding someone that does something similar to what you like to do is a good way. And it doesn't always have to be a formal education, but like a mentorship or find some person that's doing something similar and just connect with them. And truly figuring out what it is that you want to do, even if it's a side job or something.
Right.
And you started off small and build it up and give it a good support legs, I guess you'd say. So there's a lot of people that just go in balls to the wall, but they don't quite understand all the things that happen in business.
No, I agree. If you can get some mentorship in it. Yeah, but I don't know. Is that, I mean, I know it happens sometimes. And there's really good organizations like SCORE out there who help people, you know, they're former business owners who are retired and they help people learn about how to run a business and business plans and stuff like that. But then again, if you are going out there and asking somebody and you're potentially the potential competition.
Well, that's true.
Are they, are they really going to, to share, share that wealth of knowledge? I mean, to me, there's enough out there for everybody, but maybe, I mean, not all people may feel that way.
Yeah. I think if you've got the right people, and I think, you know, SCORE and what other, other organizations that are out there, the fact of the matter is you have to be introduced to them in the first place. So
I do agree.
You, there's a lot of things out there, but it might be over someone's head. So just start with something that you like to do. And a lot of people are, if you're artistic, you know, a lot of people can do things with Etsy and I'm not really artistic. So I'm not selling anything that way. But the, the important thing is to be a cheerleader for whomever has that idea. So maybe you're not doing it yourself. Maybe you're just helping someone else out.
Yeah.
Get their dream.
I do think it's pretty cool. Things like Etsy and whatnot. I love e-commerce, the options.
Yes.
That that brings. Having, having brick and mortar is not cheap, nor is it available for everybody, but that shouldn't hamper your ability to maybe start a business of some sort.
And I think the COVID days have kind of given us opportunities for things that maybe we didn't think about doing before. So with a lot of people no longer working their eight to five job. They may have found things that they like to do. I don't know. But I think it gave a lot of people time to think about what they actually wanted to do with their lives.
Yeah. Yeah. I do, I think that time at home, when you couldn't go out and do all that. When it, and I don't know if the eight to five job part of it changed because I'm thinking the eight to five job was still maybe in, in a lot of cases, the eight to five job. I think what may have changed is the other stuff. You couldn't do the extracurriculars that made all of our lives really busy. The running around, the kids didn't have all the sports and you couldn't go out and eat. You couldn't do this. Right. You were home. And so I do think that pause gave a lot of thinking time. Yeah, I can speak to that because guess what? I started a podcast. So that is actually how that all happened.
Okay. I thought that's been going on longer than that. So.
Nope. Uh, one year.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. And community.
The community, we're blessed with a great community in Oshkosh. And the last couple of years I've realized that there's a lot of stories in our community. And I love learning about everyone's story because my story, my way of looking at things are going to be far different than yours. Or different than someone down the street. So I will say with my campaign, I've met a lot of people who have, they, they look at things differently than I do. And I think that's important because we have to realize we're not all in this bubble of all thinking the same and having the same experiences. So I enjoy getting to meet people and see what's in our community and truly see it, whether it be the local bar where people kind of use it as a neighborhood gathering or our parks. We've got a lot going on here. We're a relatively safe community. But I think a lot of people may have started to realize that during the COVID years. That there's, there's stuff to do and there's connections to be made throughout our community. So.
Yeah, I would agree. I don't know. I, it's easy. I think in Oshkosh, it might be easy to just like not sometimes engage certain things. Engage certain things in the community because you just look at them all the time and you just never do it. And so, and Cash listeners have heard me talk about this before and I've lived, I've, I've lived in my house for over 20 years and never used to go to Manominee Park. And it's right, couple of blocks away. And then I started going and then I was like, oh my God, like there's people who pay a lot of money to have access to be close proximity to a park like this. To be on the water and the lake. And, and they do such an amazing job of maintaining. And they do such an amazing job of maintaining it and the things that are in it and the events that they host in it. We're lucky.
Right. We are.
And might not ever touch it because you're just never think to do it, or it's just outside of the need. Or maybe you're just working too hard.
Yep. That's absolutely true. There's things out there, you know, you just have to take the time to look at, what is it? Stop and smell the roses? Stop and smell the dead fish from the Lake Winnebago.
Luckily we don't have too many days, but, but you're, you know. You are right. There are certain days and believe me, there's, I, I, there's several seasons that you have when you live over in my neighborhood and. There is that.
Yeah. You've got one coming up, don't you? Lake Fly's gotta be coming.
Flies, that's three times a year. Yeah, yeah. There's Lee Jamper Theater season, which is where, uh, we sit out on the porch and we can hear. As the wind blows, we can hear them rocking out.
Hopefully it's good music, otherwise if it's not your type.
Uh, the funniest, uh, experience we ever had was actually, um, Rick Springfield's, uh, um, Jesse's girl. One night and me and my wife were just dying because that was just going.
Oh, wow.
So hard and the wind was blowing in the right direction and we were just like, oh my God, they're losing their minds over Rick Springfield. Yeah. So it definitely made me feel some kind of way because you know, I have eighties nostalgia.
Oh yes, I love the eighties.
The eighties were good. Okay. Cash hidden gems.
Hidden gem. I will say, because we were talking about outside, uh, would be the Weewash Trail. A lot of people know about it, but they don't actually realize how. Long it is, I guess, the distance, um, or what it's connected to. So the last few years, my family and I have biked on the Weewash and we usually start by, um. Let's see, Two Brothers Restaurant, park there.
Yes.
And we bike our tails off as far as we can go. And then, um, it connects, I mean, there's, it goes Nina, it, I mean, it, it goes forever Larson. And then we come back and we go to, um, the brewery on the trail and we bring a sack lunch. And then we go inside and have beverages from, uh, Bear Bones. So it's a, and they have picnic tables out there and places to park your bike. So it's a great summertime activity. I'm, I don't know that I'd ever run it. Um, that's a lot of running. But biking is, uh, certainly something you can do with your family and just keep pedaling.
Wait a minute, are you a runner?
Oh, I, I, I am not a runner. Like I've, I tried for, um, I don't want to say run, like 5K or something like that I used to do, but. Got bad, I'm getting old. I got like a bad neck and I don't need to be jumping up and down. So bike's fine.
Yeah. I got like bad everything. Ankles, elbows, whatever. Yeah.
Breaking down. I don't know.
Facts. There is facts to that. Okay. You know, you're not the first person to mention that trail and now, and I feel like I have not done that trail. I'm gonna have to put.
Get on your bike and then you gotta get the sack lunch because then when you come back. You have a couple beverages, eat your lunch.
Hey, look, I'm feeling it. I'm feeling what you're talking about. I don't own a bike right now.
You could borrow a friend.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm not against buying a bike, you know?
Well, I'm wondering if you could even buy them still. Um, for a while there, last year you couldn't find bikes anywhere.
Well, yeah, of course not. There was, you couldn't find anything where that was outdoor experience because everybody was doing it.
Yep.
So yeah, no, I'm thinking maybe you can find a bike now.
Yeah, maybe. Well, there's a, there's a cool place in Appleton. The guy fixes up bikes and then he has, um, I think it's kind of out of his home. But he has a ton of bikes for sale and we got bikes last year when no one could get bikes. We got some fixed up bikes.
I had bikes, but I donated them to the place over there off of, uh, Main Street.
Okay.
Uh, by the steel place and you can donate them and they fix them up and give them away. And I'm going to tell you, I'm, I'm kind of traumatized because I've got a, I've got a frat brother who rides centuries. And basically riding bikes with him is a hazing experience. Yeah, yeah. He hazes you. And, and, um, I'm all about like, I actually want to feel my legs and I want to be able to touch my face. There's things that, you know. I don't know if you've ever done something crazy like that. Well, here's the thing, it doesn't even take that much anymore now. Like it's like a little bit of, of doing too much now. It's like, oh wow, now I can't move. And I'm in like, I need a body cast for about two days.
I once biked the Weewash by myself because it was the weekend of me, because my family went up north for the weekend in the summer. And I biked, I want to say like fif- sixteen miles each way on the Weewash. I mean, I just kept going. Because I'm stupid like that and I just want to, I have to go further than I did the time before. So I went and then I biked back and I was, the weekend of me was the weekend of me sitting and doing nothing. My legs were not going to go anywhere.
You were done.
I was done. It was the stupid weekend of me, I guess, but.
It's not stupid. I mean, there's a little bit of, but I, hey, look, I like, I like the fact that you are about that life. But, um, you know, it all feels good until you pay for it.
But you could do the, uh, the local bike run, one of those Friday nights. They go with their little banana bikes and.
Oh my God, that is, I've, I've been in the park when, uh, walking Bosco the podcast dog when, when that was going on. And I thought that was so amazing. There was like literally 50 to 75 people just cruising through.
Like the beach cruisers, those are the best bikes. I've, uh, collected a couple of those. I have one that has, uh, God, it's green and white there. I call my alcohol bikes just because they have like, um, like an alcohol name to them, whatever. It's a little bit weird. But I brought them up to our family place up in Managua and we just use the little cruiser bikes. They're good. They're fun bikes.
Oh yeah. My, my wife's totally, she totally wants like one of those Schwens.
Banana seat or whatever.
Well, the banana seat, like I know the banana seat. I grew up with the banana seat. It's how I learned to ride a bike. I shout out to my dad who ran behind me, holding the banana seat. My dad was the real deal. He was that dude, no training wheels. We're gonna run behind you and hold you up. Yes, my, my dad held me down. So 100%. No, no, this was just flat out. Look, um, yeah, no, first of all, I lived in the mill. So, uh, hills in the mill, you don't want to be on a bike going down those. Those blocks ain't that long and that traffic is serious. So that's, that's kind of. How I feel about that. All right. What's the cash need?
The cash needs more outdoor places to eat, like outdoor restaurants. I could eat outside year round if they let me, um, honestly, I love eating outside. And as soon as it's warm enough, that's what I, that's what I want to do. I just, it feels like you're on vacation, but you're here. So it's a cheap vacation.
Oh, bruh, I love it.
Like a little mini stay vacation, but I just want to be outside. Everything tastes better outside.
Everything tastes better. I was, I think that should be a T-shirt.
Yeah. I could make one. I make T-shirts once in a while for myself when I have, yeah. Make my little sayings.
Uh-oh. Okay. All right.
If I'm feeling something, that's what I'm doing. So.
Well, you know what? Uh, Sarah, I'm going to say after you get done with this episode, I want a T-shirt. I want a T, I want a Sarah saying T-shirt.
Okay. Well, it has to be your saying, the cash saying.
Well.
You gotta tell me what you want.
I think, uh, here's what I'm saying. Listen to the episode, find that saying.
Okay. Find the, something you say a lot.
Well, well.
It encompasses you.
I can wear your saying. I'm, I'm like, I'm about that life. Why not?
I don't know.
Somebody will walk up to me and be like, I know her.
Yeah, right?
Well, I already know I, my, my in-laws will.
Absolutely.
Facts. All right. We are on to this naughty slash heroes corner segment. This is your opportunity to nominate somebody to the naughty slash heroes corners, not necessarily a person, an organization, a thing. It could be whatever you want it to be. So, um, what are you thinking?
I am going to nominate a person that I have spent the last few months with. It is Ralph Harrison. He is, actually he's running for, uh, Winnebago County supervisor position, but he is probably. He, he is Ashgash. He's like an Ashgash cheerleader. And I find him really interesting because he does a ton of volunteering all the time and he, his joke is that he is retired a million times. And if you look on his Facebook page, there's like a million different jobs, but I think he lists everything he's ever done. But he, uh, he volunteers at the farmer's markets and he's at, um, the grand. He does, uh, things, events with, uh, the arena. And he just, he's such a, he's such a guy, like he's, um, him and I have done a few candidate things together, like meet and greets. But he's, he's kind of like that dad, grandpa kind of, you know, he'll, he'll help you out.
He totally is.
Yes.
He's a good dude.
He's, yeah, he's one of the few good people. And like I said, he's just like a cheerleader of, um, Ashgash. I'll say Amy Albright is probably like the female cheerleader and Ralph is like the male cheerleader.
Oh, Amy Albright has it on lock.
Right. No one's going to beat her, but like if, if, if Ralph could like a, get a little cheerleader outfit, I think he'd be, he'd be a great addition.
Oh, yeah. No, Ralph's a good dude. Uh, I know him from herd games and, and, uh, yeah, he's just, he's just solid.
He's, he's real and I think we need more genuine, real people out there.
You don't think we got enough of those?
No, I don't. Uh, some people are shady. You trust everyone you talk to? No.
Hey, look, you know what I trust? I trust the gut.
Okay.
The gut. And, and I don't know, I don't think I have a scenario, um, where I run into that many unauthentic people. I think there's, people are what it is, but that could just be me.
Yeah. You're a nice guy. You must look at the best in people.
I think, I think, yeah, whether you, uh, there's scientific proof and, and I just read this article that actually you're wired to do that. More so than the other way around, because if you did it the other way around, you actually would stay in a constant state of anxiety.
Okay.
And you would, and you would break down.
Okay.
And so we are all wired to actually trust first. Just saying scientifically.
Yeah, I trust sometimes, but some people, I guess maybe they just feel more real, like you, you feel, like you can feel their aura, whatever you want to call it. But you like feel them, um, versus some people. Maybe it's just like some people know who they are and maybe some people are still finding their way. I'm not sure.
Well, that, that is truth. I think we're all on our own journeys and, um, sometimes we think we know who we are. And then life makes us learn more about ourselves.
Absolutely.
So, okay, that's fair. Well, you know what? Shout out to Ralph.
Right.
Good dude. And you know what this brings us to?
I don't know. You're going to tell me though.
I sure am. I'd like, I'm glad that you know how this works. It is time for our topic of the week.
All right.
All right. So topic of the week is always chosen by our guest and this week's topic of the week is unsung heroes.
Yes, it is.
So.
Well, um, the reason that I, I was thinking about the unsung, unsung heroes is because I think COVID highlighted, uh, quite a bit of people. Who all of a sudden became more in the spotlight or more important. Um, and maybe you didn't realize how much they did. So I run a trucking company. I have done that for eight years. And, um, my unsung heroes personally would be our truck drivers. Because you realized over the last couple of years, that's who brings your toilet paper and your hand sanitizer and everything else that you want while you were staying home. So, um, there are a lot of people that do those types of jobs that people don't quite see them. And I think it's important that everyone is seen and, um, and to realize again that, that they have a story too. Uh, last year, um, through a community group, we were, uh. Recognizing custodial work through our school district. And the reason is because again, in most cases, people aren't giving them, um, maybe the props that they deserve. Or, or realizing without them. There is really no, there's no education. Because they just have like a foundation of, of helping, um, without anyone really seeing what they do. They don't, you know, a lot of times they're cleaning after school or they are, um. They're usually really helpful. Like if you've ever gone to the schools after school, the custodian is probably going to be there, the one there who helps you out. Who knows everything. It's almost like the, the school, um, secretary, but they kind of know it. They've got the pulse of the school. So, um, people like that, there's just a lot of people out there that I wish were, um, more visible and realized that. The job that you do is important and, uh, you should be recognized for it. So.
Couldn't agree more. Yeah. Got a special, uh, place in my heart for truck drivers because my father was a truck driver and, uh. You know, shout out again to Pop out there and, uh, no doubt, I think what happens sometimes is. It's not that. The work is ignored, but I think when you do a certain level, when you do a certain type of work and you do it at such a high level. You're invisible because it's done right.
That's true.
And people just, when things run smoothly, but people pay attention when it's broke.
Yes.
People pay attention when it's wrong. Just like people pay attention to people when they're, um, out of character. But not when they're the good person they normally are.
True.
They point out, you know, we, we are a negative focused society in a lot of ways. When we point out the negatives, we don't celebrate the positives enough.
True.
And so I think that's what happens in the same case of, you know, like custodial. Now someone like me. I holler at them. I talk to them because I'm going to talk to them. Like I need to know, because I know they are the foundational thing, uh, person, people, team that runs things. Without them, it doesn't run right. And particularly, I love the fact that you brought them up because during COVID and we needed all this sanitation.
Yep.
They had to work extra hard.
Yep. All the cleaning.
And not sure if anyone took the time to really say thank you for that because there was extra asks.
There were, and I, and I don't think that there were extra of them to get it done. They were just working extra hard. And I think a lot of people are. You know, we owe, we owe a lot to that type of person. And I, I know some people, um, they'll say, I'm only a truck driver. I'm only a custodian. I'm only a whatever. You're never only anything because you are something. That without you, we just wouldn't be able to do what we want to do.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I mean, I think that was pointed out really well during COVID. The thought, the thought process of essential workers, because all of a sudden, um, that stock boy at your grocery store became really valuable. Like you, you really didn't think about it like, but, uh, you know, and now, you know, our shelves still aren't stocked. Necessarily fully, um, and I don't know if that's a, a supply chain thing or if that's a labor thing. But you, you start to look at them differently and there's definitely a different value.
Yep. And I hope people are smiling more at them and, you know, I, I, I hope it gives everyone pause to realize that. You know, we can't always be on the money and we're going to have to wait a little bit and take a couple extra breaths with whatever it is that we want or we're looking for. Just use that time to just, just to be.
I think we as Americans are super spoiled in the instant gratification society. And if you go to other countries, and let me rephrase this by saying, no, I have not been there. But, but friends, from friends, from other countries and conversations I've had, um, they don't have that luxury. It's not there. It's, it just doesn't come. They can't just go to the store and buy it. It's not in, it's not in mass quantity and it's not always readily available. And we here in America, we have taken that for granted.
Right.
Big time.
The, well, the markets here, if, if you've ever gone over in Europe, you know, they have the local community markets. And maybe you have three choices of whatever it is. Um, here, you know, you go to Walmart and the shelves are empty, but if you consolidated that, it's not empty. There's a lot of stuff. We don't need all the stuff. Um, I actually just got back, uh, my vacation was in Honduras. And they don't have a lot of stuff and everything's on island time and you know, it's just a slower pace. And there's something to be said for a slower pace and just being happy and enjoying life a little bit more.
Facts. Couldn't agree with that one more.
So we, uh, we need to, to understand that we are very blessed, even those of us who may not have a lot. We're still really blessed compared to some people in our, in the world.
No, I think even those who don't have much at all here, it's a different not having much here than in other places. So, yeah, we are blessed.
We are.
Okay. Anything else you'd like to add?
Ah, I don't know. I'm. I'm going to ask you a question. What's your favorite part of Ashgash, living here?
Well, that, what I like and I have. Well, that, what I like, and I have a set it's the, with your question on why I like that, uh, living in Oshkosh is the same question to me as why you live in Oshkosh. And it's a question like that as a person of color, you get asked all the damn time. And it's simple. The same reasons you do. All the same reasons. I love, I love the pace of life here.
Okay.
I love the quality of life for the cost of living. I loved our school system, cause it did great by my daughter. Um, I love our, the safety. People here try to say things as if this isn't, like, we're changing and it's unsafe. No, you've never lived anywhere that's unsafe. You don't know unsafe. All of you sleep well.
Right.
Nobody sleeps with one eye open, no matter what street you live in in Oshkosh, unless you got a crazy neighbor. And then crazy neighbors are everywhere. That's just different. You can live in a, in, in a, a million dollar house and have a crazy neighbor. I know people that live out in the woods and have crazy neighbors. And they're mad. And so you're worried about it because you're living out in the sticks and this crazy neighbor is doing crazy things out in the sticks. Yeah, that's actually scarier to me than anything that's happening out here. Uh, yeah. So um, those are the reasons. And most importantly, I like the people. The people for the most part, you know, um, I've had, I can say I've had a million amazing experiences, meeting people and, and all sorts of people, uh, from all sorts of walks of lives, backgrounds. Um, and I can count my times of challenge on a couple of hands.
Okay.
And I've been here thirty years.
That's good.
I think it's pretty, I, I give it, I give Oshkosh a lot more credit than others may give Oshkosh credit. Um, you know, because there's a lot of people that feel certain ways about Oshkosh. Um, whether they're locals, because there's a lot of locals that feel their ways about Oshkosh, because they've been here and their family's been here and their family, families was here. And you know, married to somebody who is a true local local.
Yep.
On all levels. I've, I've been immersed into that. And then I'll also say, um, as people moving into the community, um, particularly diverse individuals, it feels some kind of way too.
Okay.
But.
But can you elaborate on that?
What do you mean?
How, well, you said your, your daughter had, she was um, enjoyed her education.
Yeah.
Like what would you say to someone coming here who was more diverse than straight up Oshkosh was twenty years ago? Like, how does that make, I don't wanna say, how does that make you feel? Like, what would you tell them, someone considering Oshkosh?
Um, I wouldn't tell them anything.
No? Just to be?
Well, you gotta have your own experience.
Okay.
I, my experience, uh, and my daughter's experience would be different, because once again, she's Oshkosh. And half of her family is half of Oshkosh.
That's not, that's not a lie.
That's not, it's not much of an exaggeration either. So like, I don't expect my daughter's uh, experience as a person of color to be someone else's by any means. I know that she has had, um, for lack of a better term, privilege.
Okay.
Living here and her experience. So, nope, I can't actually. I know, I know other people that have moved here. That's not, it's not necessarily the way the door was not open for them in that, in that same way. Um, and they may not be having the same experiences. So, you know, I don't wanna confuse. A, I can't be the spokesperson.
Right. Abs- absolutely.
And, and um, I don't wanna confuse anything, because I know there's privileges that I've had living here in Oshkosh, which one is going to the local college and being a Titan and being associated with the university for a long time. So I mean, there's things, but if you're not, if you don't have those local ties here, it could be a very different experience. And it, whether, there is, there is a statistic, and I heard this from a professor friend. Um, it's research actually. And what it is, is that Oshkosh is one of the top places in the country where people don't move. Which means you're recycling the same.
Everything.
The same cultures. You might be a little more closed off.
Okay.
It might not be as welcoming, because you, these people aren't moving away and, you know.
I get it.
And so that's a thing, right? And so that's why.
It's change. It's, it's kinda like, you know.
Change is hard.
And when new people come in, you're, you, until you get to know their story and you get to know them as a human being. I think that's what um, again, the last couple of years have been, like, I've, I've gotten a lot, know a lot more stories and I've gotten to know the person, because I don't wanna um, look at you as, you know, being a podcaster or something like that, but I'd rather know what, what makes you you. And uh, I think that's what makes everything interesting. I, I kinda like a researcher, not really, but like I love to delve into all the stuff and find out what makes someone tick. So that's where, how you connect with someone on a, on a level.
I will give you the credit that if that's your approach, that's a pretty good approach, but that's not the common approach.
I would agree.
Cause the common person, I would say, um, and not to, not to their fault, but just the, I think to human nature, lives in silos.
Yep.
You know, and the silos, silos is, is a powerful effect in, in the sense of people don't actually realize sometimes how siloed their lives are, because what ends up happening is, okay, so you have your family, that's the original silo, and then the extended family, and then friends. And a lot of your friends are gonna be similar to your family. And then you work somewhere and guess what? Those people are probably really similar to you. And then you move into this neighborhood and guess what? That neighborhood is full of people just like you. And so the silo gets bigger and bigger and bigger. And then all of a sudden, your whole world is judged by the silo and you think that's what's right.
Okay. Yep, absolutely.
And you become really closed minded to difference and don't realize, because you think everything is like that, because you've layered all your silos. And that's the problem.
Yep.
Because that's not the world.
Right. It's kinda like all your Facebook friends are the same. They all think the same. And if they aren't, you're probably muting them for thirty days or something like that. So.
Well, I think sometimes, I, I don't know. Uh, I feel like Facebook is one of those things, like you do the best you can with it.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, uh, some people are just, they, they go through, like, we've, in a lot of cases, we've lost the middle. Where we ain't gotta agree, but we can respect.
Yep.
And at that point, that's where I feel like there's just been a huge breakdown. Because we've lost the ability to respect those that we don't have to fully agree.
Right.
And I don't necessarily, maybe I disagree with sixty percent and I can kinda get down with forty. Or, you know, even if it's ten, you know, you're just not totally wrong and I don't need to call you a name for it or whatever. It just needs to be like, I don't agree with it, but it's cool, you know?
That's the, that's the, I wish more people thought of it that way, because I think you're missing out on getting to know more people. Or more, more everything. You're just, you're, you're shortchanging yourself and you're shortchanging those people.
Well, you're shortchanging your community.
Yes.
Cause um, uh, here's the thing about that. Change is gonna happen whether you like it or not. So the change that's happening, and let, let what's happened here in, I'll say the last thirty years. But it's been longer, it's been going on longer than that. Um, you either partner with change or you succumb to it. But change is gonna happen.
Yep. Change, change will run you over if you're not.
Yeah. And there's nothing, you, you can try to get in the way of it and you can try to do the things, but at the end of the day, the change is gonna happen regardless, and you will do yourself more service by finding ways to stay open minded and embracing it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I love that, because it's just, like I said, it just, um, you're always, you know, a lot of people wanna learn about different subjects, or I'd rather just learn about the people and learn about, you know, we don't have to go to Appleton. You know, why don't we just figure out what's good in Oshkosh and the people in Oshkosh? Get a connection.
We do.
Yeah.
We do. Um, but there's definitely its own cultures. Now, now uh, being, working there and living here, it's a huge culture difference. Just a huge culture difference. Good convo. Like it. Anything else you wanna add?
No, I'm, I don't know. I'm just fresh off vacation, so I've got vacation fog brain, so it's a little bit.
Wait, don't apologize for that. Go on and celebrate that, y'all. Look, look, y'all, I just got off vacation. It was warm and nice. Yes.
Yes.
Gonna be that person.
I'm gonna be jealous this next, you know, when all these uh, photos on Facebook start coming in with people going elsewhere. So like, I took mine a week before people. So unfortunately, I'm gonna have to be jealous here for the next time.
That's fair.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, now it is time. We start winding down. That's what this signifies. And so this is the time where I just start uh, saying thank you, Kosh listeners. Once again, we are a work in progress. I appreciate you. Thank you for tuning in. Thank you for the shout outs. Thank you for the emails, the messages through Instagram. Um, y'all are the best. Now, once again, you can always reach out to me. If you wanna be a guest, you know, open door policy with the Kosh, holler at me. Uh, email me at askthakosh@gmail.com. Once again, that is askthakosh@gmail.com. Uh, if you wanna see here, find a place where you can check out all the episodes, check out the new website. Yes, new website. And that is at thekoshpodcast.com. Once again, that is thekoshpodcast.com. Now, I've been asking for weeks now for having someone to utilize, we wanna, I wanna kick off a new segment. It's called Ask the Kosh. And what I wanted somebody to call in, we got a voicemail number.
Oh, wow.
Yes.
That's pretty exciting.
Yes. And so actually I had my first person do it, but I didn't wanna roll it out yet, cause I didn't, I didn't have a time, time to put it together properly. But I do wanna, you know who you are out there who made that, and I'm not gonna say your name right now, but I wanna get you a mad shout out, because you are a loyal, loyal, loyal listener. And we will, I'm gonna play your question flat.
That's great. That's like, that's learning about people though, but now we get to.
It's a hard question too.
And it's like, la, you know, it's like, um, gives it life.
It's a hard question.
Good.
All right, I'm gonna say the name. Nicole, you know. All right. Um, and that's it. And uh, once again, if you want to call and leave that, that is nine two zero three eight five nine two nine eight. Once again, that is nine two zero three eight five nine two nine eight. Um, please feel free, ask us the questions. And me and the guests, we're gonna do our best to try to answer it, at least address it.
Oh, I hope it's not like relationship questions, cause that.
Oh, no, that's what I totally am hoping for.
Oh, Jesus.
Yes.
What is that? Uh, the old, the old lady that used to do that, solve all the problems?
Oh, wait, wait, that was Dr. Ruth.
Yeah, there you go.
Dr. Ruth. Oh, well, maybe she wasn't relationship. She was kinda just sex. I think that's what that was.
That might be too much for Oshkosh. Maybe there's a subculture of that.
Oh, yeah. Well, I admit, I just think there's layers to it. There's layers to Oshkosh, right? But nonetheless, please feel free to give us that question. All right. Now, you know what's next? I'll tell you what's next. It's my favorite part of the show. It is shout out time. This is your opportunity to give your shout outs. Who you shouting out?
Oh, who am I shouting out?
Yes.
I am gonna shout out to my dad. Um, and the reason I'm giving a shout out to my dad is because he worked many years um, starting a trucking company. And without him, I don't know what I would be doing. So I'm just gonna shout out to uh, William Doherty. And uh, of course my mom, cause she'd be sad if I didn't say hi to her. So, that's it. They're great. They're living the retired dream, but um, without them, I, I wouldn't be here and I wouldn't have be the, the person that I am. So.
Love that. Girl, if you didn't shout out your mom, Thanksgiving was gonna be rough.
Right. She would be very sad.
You'd have had problems. She wasn't gonna be sad. She was gonna be mad.
She doesn't get mad. She just gets really sad. So you gotta make sure you take care of your mom and dad.
Facts. Facts. Anyone else?
I'm going to give a shout out. Oh, I'm gonna do this, because I'm somewhat tied to you in a weird way. I'm gonna shout out to all the Green Meadow School folks who might be listening. Um, your niece is one of them. Uh, grew up in a small little community school, um, Green Meadow, and we were out in the country. And uh, we were a tight knit group. So whenever we have a class reunions, we have this group of, cause I think at one point we had maybe twelve kids in our class.
Ooh.
And uh, that was like, we're, we're, we're the real people. Like we can do anything. If you grew up in the country, you can do anything.
I think you become very resourceful living in the country, so.
You do.
To the Green Meadows folks. All right. Well, I've got a, this week I did a lot of stuff, so I got a big list of shout outs here. So uh, shout out to my man, Mike Norton. Appreciate you out there. Uh, Mike looks out. We got an episode coming up with Mike soon. Um, shout out to Lakeisha Hayes. Look, Judge Hayes, mad props, mad props. You know what's up. Um, big shout out to Justin from Portland. Now, Justin from Portland is a gentleman who's emailed me several times. And he moved here from Portland and he was like, I learned about the Kosh from Oshkosh, from listening to your web, uh, your podcast. And he was like, I know things. I knew what to come and look for and different things and, and what to come into the community. And so like, and then he told me he's here.
Wow. What is he doing?
Um, well, I won't say what he's doing. I think I'm.
Was he like working here or like, did he just move here?
Yeah. Yeah. I think he's been here a little while now, but he, he sent me another email to let me know he was here.
He didn't move because of your podcast. Did he didn't pick Oshkosh? I mean, maybe.
I, I, hey, look, I don't wanna speak on it. I don't know. And I don't think I, I have that kinda influence. But you know, but it would be, I don't know about you, if I'm going to a brand new community, if I could go listen to something and learn, okay, these are the gems. These are maybe some things they need. Oh, these are the places people like to eat. These are the foods. These are the things. Like uh, throughout, you know, we're, we're creeping on our fortieth episode, you know, it's uh, there's a lot that you could have learned if you've listened along the way, so.
Tips and tricks.
Tips and tricks. By the Kosh. Maybe that should be a segment.
Not good. Where are those tricks?
Um, but shout out to him. I'm hoping to have him as a guest in the future. Uh, shout out to Kevin at the four oh four venue. Went to that yesterday, the open house. That was pretty sweet. Yeah, four oh four was cool. Like I did, I've never been in that big building, lived over here all this time. Well, I shouldn't say never. I've never been there to look around.
Okay.
I walked in, got on the elevator, went, got, saw who I need to see. So, um, and one big shout out to Tyler at Bottoms Up.
Oh, what Tyler make a good drink or something?
Well, I, Tyler's the owner and Tyler was just a gracious owner.
Nice.
He went there, I haven't gone there and, I don't know, been a super long time. And just happened to go there the other night and um, he was just gracious. And there's something to be said when, you know, you got a bar full of people and you're the owner and you know there's new people in here, cause we're not the regulars. And you took the time to just uh, holler at us. And there, and that's, that's being a good business owner.
Yep.
Because you know what? Me and the wife are probably gonna go back.
Ah, I actually had a similar experience at Jansen's a couple of weeks ago. We had a meet and greet and I was talking to the bo, the owner. And I didn't realize he owns, is it three fourteen?
Three fourteen. Yep.
I didn't realize he owned it, but yeah.
Shout out to Travis.
Fun guy. And uh, I just, and I kept apologizing. I'm like, I'm sorry, I'm like asking all these questions. But again, I, I love learning people's story. And that, I wanted to know what his story was. And he was nice enough to just go on and tell me all about him.
Uh, let me just send that shout out. Shout out to Travis. And Travis, we, he was supposed to be a guest and uh, I canceled one time, he canceled one time and we never got a reschedule.
That should be interesting, cause he's a pretty interesting guy.
Uh, he's got a lot of energy and I think he'll be a fantastic guest. Okay. So, um, oh, one more shout out um, that I have is to the jerk joint in Appleton.
That's good.
Faith and Rod. Y'all be doing it. Why y'all, every time I go eat there, y'all wanna hurt my feelings. Y'all do, y'all way too good at what y'all do and it is delicious. If you don't know.
I love jerk food.
Oh, have you ever gone there?
Yes.
That place.
It, I never knew about it. And uh, I, I've um, jerk chicken is like my favorite, like island food kinda thing or whatever. I guess, I don't know. And then the sides that you get, like, it's just real.
It is. It's, it's real. And so the other day, they had uh, they had an oxtail special.
Okay, I'm not ordering that.
Oh, yeah. I totally messed with the oxtail. I was about that life. Uh, it was, it was fantastic, delicious, smoked. And then Rod comes out of the kitchen with a little boat, a little, little, uh, you know, bowl with some stuff. He hooked me up with some uh, some goat. And I was like, oh man, bro. And he owns it. You're just looking at me like I'm not eating none of that.
So I, I don't do a whole lot of like red meat stuff. I'm more of like a chicken kinda gal or fish or whatever. And uh, um, but like jerk, so we, we've um, been, been blessed to be able to go on vacation a few times. Saint Martin and whatever, and you get some really good jerk over. um, but like jerk. So we, we've um, been, been blessed to be able to go on vacation a few times, St. Martin and whatever. And you get some really good jerk over there. Um, but it's always the, some of those strange things like the oxtail or whatever. You just really want to make sure you know what you're eating. There's lots of parts. I mean, they're resourceful. They use parts of stuff that I'm probably not gonna enjoy, but someone else I'm sure loves it.
Yeah, the, the facts. Yeah. It says, some people, it's a delicacy.
Yep. Yep. Good for them. More for them.
All right. Last thing, parting words of wisdom. What do you have for us?
My parting words of wisdom? I don't know. Am I, am I wise? Um.
Or I can give you a choice.
Okay.
Your other quest, the other question is, because I may be switching questions, um, is what would yourself tell your 12 year old self today?
Uh, when I was 12, first off, I wanted to be a nurse. And uh, seeing as I lived on a um, little small hobby farm, we were castrating pigs back then. And uh, the first swipe of the blade, I was no longer going to be a nurse. And I was running inside the house to vomit. So, um, I really, the first, I, I should have told myself to stick with the nursing. Like I think that would be fabulous to be a nurse, but if I can't stand blood, I'm probably not going to be a nurse. Um, but I really would say, um, be true to yourself and keep your, your small town roots or your, your um, like little farm girl roots or whatever, because I think that's a, it makes you a, a true person and um, kind of uh, God, I don't know. That's all I'd say. Just stick to your roots and stick to really what you want to do.
Sounds really good to me.
I don't know. It's not all that deep, but sometimes it doesn't need to be, right?
No, it was authentic.
I hope I'm authentic.
Don't hope, you are. The Kosh.